Good afternoon and welcome. This is the February 5th, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of this building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the door to my right by pulling the fire alarm located to the right of the door under the monitor. Please do let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we do ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each agenda item. If you do plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. The first item on today's agenda is the Zen City Community Engagement Platform Demonstration, presented by our city administrator, Andy Kitzrow, and our Director of Communications, Sean Yonker.
Hey, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and move up front. I'm going to bring my computer with me because we have a guest presenter.
Following up on our conversation from last time, we've invited Zen City Platform representatives, Alon, to be able to come and present. He has a small presentation. He's here, right here on the screen, so I'm going to turn it over to him. He can give you a little bit of background himself and his company, and then we'll share a few minutes with you about the slide, and then we can do Q and A at the end. So we'll turn it over.
Thank you very much, city manager, and thank you very much, everyone, for having us over. We're really humbled to be part of this. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So, nice meeting you. My name is Alon. I'm a Local Government Solution Manager in charge of all the local governments I work with in Maryland in Zen City. Very nice to meet you. I'm going to show my screen real quick to have to show a short deck that we prepared and then to show you the platform. Just let me know, please, if you can see my screen that I'm showing. You see my screen? Yeah, great. Okay, so, welcome to Zen City 360. This is the platform for community trust, the way we actually engage and increase feedback from residents across Salisbury. The way that we do that with over 300 local governments that we work with. In Maryland, we have the honor to work with about 10 local governments, and also in the entire area of the East Coast, we work with about 80 cities, counties, and state agencies. Salisbury, we're very proud to hopefully start working together soon. We have a lot to discuss in our previous discussion, and some of it are very relevant, still very relevant. Now, as part of what we do with communities and with local government, this is the only segment, and this is very relevant to some of the key topics that was mentioned in previous discussions that we had with the city manager and the communications director. We want to increase the opportunity to have a chance to hear more voices in the community, to reach out to the millennials, senior residents, to the people who stay home and work and don't necessarily know about how much the city is working hard for them. And this is where we want to allow you to inform and educate your residents about what it is that you're doing to them, and also collaborate and empower these relations. We want to increase transparency, to allow residents to learn more about your work and about how they can benefit from it, and to give a much greater or wider perspective about public safety, homelessness, your infrastructure, your economic development plans, your strategic planning, and your coming year or years' goals. As part of it, we want to help you see better perception of your community's needs, their concerns, their priorities, what's more important to them. And with our team that I'm going to elaborate shortly, we're going to allow you to understand better how to move the needle into where you're aiming to. Eventually, what we do in Zen City is a solution that encompasses a lot of features or models. This is why we call it Zen City 360. We believe it's reaching out to more parts of your community and reach out to those more marginalized groups and be as inclusive as possible. We want to allow you to have a few layers of engagement to increase trust. So we do that with aggregated data that appears organically, online, on public-facing channels, and collaborate with residents proactively and directly in the Engage solution, and eventually lower barriers of participation to allow more residents' voices to be heard, and then to measure performances and the increase of satisfaction of residents over time by asking and promoting surveys as well. This is what we consider as something that will be a lot more holistic and will encompass more sides of the discussion that are being held. As part of our supporting team, this is something that is very, could be very relevant to your work. We're here to really not just to include more voices in the discussion, but also a supporting team that will be by your side to as much as possible, of course. This is a part of it. We have a main point of contact is our Local Government Success Manager, an onboarding manager, a data analyst, and a product manager that will all be part of the supporting team of Zen City, that really takes you hand in hand. You're never alone in this, as we said, as part of your team. Actually, many partners see us really as like an extension of the city or really a supporting part of the city personnel, which is really exciting and beautiful. And these are people and experts that focus on local government in your area, so it's like a cohort that we work with that can benchmark your work according to our experience in this area. I want to show you a quick look for about three to four minutes of the platform itself. That's okay? So this is where we start. As I said, this is an example of a community pretty similar in sizes to Salisbury, where you see how a snapshot of the last 30 days are aggregating all the trends and tendencies and conversation and discussion that we aggregate. You can look at it on a different day level to really have a snapshot of what's the peak and what's the discussion, what's the sentiment analysis. Our sentiment analysis is based on AI, meaning that it reads through the context. It's not just detecting words, not just detecting where Salisbury is mentioned, but actually detects what people are talking about when it comes to it and understand the context. It can detect sarcasm or cynical reports. For example, if you have a special interest in the key topics, so we have the highlights that will be notified every day about what's the burning issues, and we break you down to different channels, from official channels, these are the channels that are under your responsibility, to unofficial channels, which are all the publicly available sources from social media. We are the only ones that actually include data from Nextdoor also, our recent partnerships, so you can see what's going on also in the neighborhood channels and in the neighborhood groups, and also publish on Nextdoor with our press release generator and our news feed publisher. And when you get more granular view, because it's a solution that fits many users and many departments, you can have an example of a more designated dashboard just about public safety, about infrastructure, about economic development, or about education, any topic that you have in mind that are to operate it. You can create, you'll have this designated dashboard that will talk about this specific notions with the most popular topics, and you can even create projects, projects that are under your scope of interest or any user's scope of interest. There are unlimited projects. Homelessness is one example that we created to a similar-sized community. And then, it's not just about aggregating the data, but also collaborate with residents. And this is something that we do with our engagement portal. This is the additional layer of our work, not just to aggregate data, but also proactively approach your residents, talk about projects that you have in mind, from affordable housing or bike lanes or economic development plans, new commercial centers. This is an example of how we portray this and as part of the narrative that we want to promote. This is where you can add all the paragraphs and the solutions that you have in mind for this specific, and ask your residents what do they think in a survey I created or in a day board I created before our meeting, a very sweet but very initial portal for Salisbury, for example, about public safety, just a topic that we had in mind, with some quotes and paragraphs, and also the opportunity to share some timelines about the coming chapters on promoting public safety in Salisbury, and also how to, for example, have direct communication with the residents from Q and A board or a survey solution that is automatically-generated for you as part of our way to innovate as much as possible. The solution, the entire platform is based on generative AI, so this is all something that keeps on learning your needs and your concerns according to what you need as part of the value plan that we create for you. And eventually, all the deliverables are being executed by our team, our data analysts that writes reports and insights for you upon demand. This is an example of one deliverable, an insight, chat with the city manager event and its reaction, or the new bike lanes and what you can see. You can request an insight upon demand, and our team of experts will deliver it to you in a timely manner before a council meeting, before a hearing, before next decision needs to be made. This is the way to promote more data-driven decision and to promote inclusiveness for the city, and eventually to save you a lot of time and concern about what, how to hear from our people, because we have it for you on the palm of your iPhone or your PC. That was like a very high-level tour, but I hope it strikes some interest.
So that was a lot of information. We can also take some questions, or he is here to answer any follow-ups.
Counsel, what questions? What questions do we have?
None right now. I'm absorbing the cost of this.
Yes, I think that's the...
And the product. I just want to make sure. It's just a lot to absorb. So I don't, just because I don't have any questions about it doesn't mean that I'm not...
Concerned.
Right. I don't have any direct questions right this minute about it.
My suggestion would be that we, as Councilwoman Blake and Jackson were saying, it is a lot to process. My initial reaction is it's a lovely presentation. It's all-encompassing. It's a great, great program. I would rather us, as a city, pursue every avenue we already have available to us and be creative, more creative possibly with the talent that we have on staff, to really pursue every conceivable avenue possible to get information out there and to communicate and to roll out anything we are contemplating ahead of time, and then see how that works before we immediately take on this $26,000 cost.
I agree wholeheartedly. Ditto to both Angela, Councilwoman Blake, and the shields. I just don't, you need to do a little bit more invasive study than this, because I don't see where it's helping us anywhere, and I think we should be able to spend our money more wisely.
Sure. So just to clarify on a couple of those points, the recommendation is for Jordan and Sean to do more internally, to be able to mine the data and to set up the surveys and to do that level of analysis?
Not necessarily on two people, because I'm sure they have a lot on their plate already, but reaching out to other staff members, either in his department, or input from, even the input from the public, in terms of who would be willing to give suggestions, setting up something with the media, things that would be set up permanently on a regular basis that the public would become familiar with and know that that's how we are communicating. And if it doesn't work, there's always next year.
Councilwoman Gregory, I want to make sure that you have any concerns or thoughts?
I echo a lot of the same sentiments of the other council members. My concern right now is we're getting ready to go into a budget session. We just had a situation where we were having difficulty meeting just regular trash pickups because we had tightened the belt so much that we didn't purchase new vehicles in a timely manner. I would say, let's revisit this. I'm not, I don't want to put it on ice completely, but what I'd like to say is, let's revisit this after budget and see what we're looking at on budget, because I know that Sean and Jordan are doing an immense amount of work already, and they don't have unlimited staff. And this is something that's highly specialized data that they're drilling down on, which would be fantastic to have, but this is a want, not a need that I see right now. And I would really like us to look at possibly revisiting this after we get through the budget season, because we've got budget right around the corner, and I know that this is something that we've all spoken about, about wanting to have transparency and better communication with our constituents, but we also need to look at the bottom line. And I just, I feel like we're going into a budget season that's going to be extremely tight, and I don't want to put anything that might be considered extraneous on it.
So I think we've posed some good comments from counsel, and I echo some of the same thoughts. I want to thank the gentleman from Zen City for giving us that presentation. But one thing, I noticed it was heavily focused on the Facebook and the Instagram and the social media analytics, which I know that that is a tool that is readily available there. So are we utilizing that scope? I know I use that on my own personal business page myself, and it's fantastic. But that was, it was a very heavy part of that, was the analytics that is driven from that. So I guess what more I think from counsel we're seeing is, you know, when you're attaching, even though it's a net of $15,000, but when we are looking into spending, you know, five digits here, we want to make sure that it's the full, that we're getting kind of what we're asking for here. I think that's the main concern.
Yeah, sure. I kind of already know what the vote is, so, but just for a couple of clarification points. Upcoming budget, this is using current fiscal year surplus or refound money, so it doesn't necessarily impact next year's budget right now. This is a one-year pilot, so we're not committing any FY25 funding to it right now. That's a good point to make. Second, what is being presented today cannot be replicated with our current staff. So if you want an increase in transparency or community engagement to anywhere close to this level, it is going to cost you money, and this is pennies on the dollar compared to what we're getting. It is a, because of the size of them and the scope of them, they're allowed to leverage a lot more resources that if we tried to make that up in the aggregate, it would probably be fivefold what they're offering right now, at least one to two full-time positions on our staff. I understand, but it is surprising from our last conversation to where we landed at this meeting, but I do, Alon, I do appreciate you jumping on.
So what are we, so I guess if, what is the plan? So if we're, you know, let's say that we say yes to this, and like, what are we seeing from your office or from communications? Like, what are we seeing in the next three, six, nine months that is going to happen with the data? I think that's what we want to see. We want to see the vision, see the light of the tunnel of what happens with this information, with what we're doing here. What does that look like? What is, what is you all using this data look like? How can we tangibly see that?
Sure. Alon, I saw you unmuted yourself. If you just want to jump back in.
Sure. I love that. Thank you. And I appreciate the feedback, and it's very honest approach, and I really appreciate. What will you see and what will you accomplish by that? It's really working on a mutual value plan that is customized or tailored to your needs, whether it's understanding better perception about main concerns or challenges that your residents have. I don't think it's something that you would necessarily be able to aggregate by yourselves at the moment, because this is a lot of data, not just on social media, but also from outlets, blogs, radio, any publicly available resource. Also a lot from social media, that's true, but also in the terms of proactively asking questions. So for example, if you want to build a new bike lane and you want to understand better where the residents or your community want it to pass the most, so this is a way to ask them this ad hoc survey, for example. So you get the chance to actually see deliverables on a monthly basis, not just three, six, or nine months. Usually, this is the time when you start to see like how valuable it is to you. Every month or so, we send every user, and of course, whoever you consider as a stakeholder for that, the designated summary about their topics, their top-of-mind resolutions and what they have in mind, and of course, insights and reports about any survey or any action item that is part of the discussion at the moment in Salisbury, whether it comes organically or proactively, and it all also integrates. So for example, when you want to discuss about budget for next year and you want to understand better community feedback for priorities or how it can participate as part of the budget, this is where we come in to really show you a much more robust and comprehensive understanding of your community and its perspective. And other than that, it also allows you to, in terms of like ROI, to really save a lot of money that might be spent elsewhere, because you understand how to allocate your resources more effectively. We've seen it in many different places happening as well, when you can understand really what your community expects from you in a timely manner, in real time, basically, and to address it accordingly, whether it's by addressing it proactively, by press release, or just by presenting what it is that you're doing to them. So this is how we actually allow you to work effectively to move the needle.
My only last thought, if I may, real quick. You know, in two agenda items from now, we are going over a TAP grant match. I'm not sure where we'll land on that, but it's a $600,000 grant we're awarded with a $150,000 match, 25% match, so that's a $750,000 investment into a bicycle master plan for design. So before we design anything, we're going to know, we're going to need input on what to design, how to design it, and what the people want to do. That would be a real-life application that we'd be using here within the next six months on getting input on the increase to that transportation network. So that would be something that would fall directly in line with this. So before we invest $750,000 into infrastructure within the transportation world, we'd want to gather feedback. So this would be an opportunity to do that. So that's just, that's just the high level, but I mean, Mayor, if you wanted to say...
Yeah, that was what I was attracted by. You know, recently Nicole from Apothecary had done a survey, informal, about just parking, for example. She got 1,500 responses on just a very, and so, you know, something like this, I think we could, I mean, it's far away what we get, any kind of questions we ask or get input on our website. And what it looked like to me, this transparency thing we're involved in here is a good thing, but it's hard, because there are so many people that are busy, that, you know, most of the people that come here for council, I mean, they're retired. They're retired, they're working, you know, working people very easily can tap into this technology. We get a much larger, I think, pool of respondents over on very specific topics, which they don't have to attend to council, right? So that's what attracted me. I called it the Facebook for municipal input, and it's kind of like that, in my opinion. But, you know, the council, you guys decide, to me, I thought it was a real easy segue into a greater level of transparency that we haven't had to date, so.
Sure.
Well, I'm sorry. I don't disagree with anything that you've presented at all, or the gentleman on the screen, which you presented it very simplistically, which is perfect, or what Mayor Taylor is saying. I just think it's time we put something on hold and look at this at a later date, as Michelle had said. Let's just wait and see instead of jumping into this. And hopefully, we don't have anything that's, you know, that's awful and detrimental to us, because we didn't take this on, but I just really would like to have a wait and see.
Councilwoman Blake?
I just wanted to make sure I reiterate the funding for this. So we have, there was a project that we felt we didn't need at the city. We have $26,000 from that pot of money that will not, it's not coming from next year's budget. This would be considered more of a pilot, and at the end of this year, we would kind of do a review to see how successful this was.
Correct, yes. So to answer those two questions, there was a different software program that we're no longer moving forward with, so by liquidating that PO, that $41,000 goes back into the general fund. So we were pulling $26,000 out of the general fund. So similar, so the way I put it is a $15,000 net change in position when it comes to those two software programs, but it would be coming out of use of surplus this year, not an FY25 budget allocation. So yes, it is still, real money is still $26,000, but just to clarify.
How soon do you really want to answer? I mean, we're not, we're just discussing it this evening, so what are our sessions?
Sure. So there is, it is your meeting. There's a couple of different ways that can happen. We can table this for further discussion. We can bring it up during budget cycle as an essential item for further consideration upcoming, or as things shake out, as we get further down to the road, Alon could always come back again, or we can resurface this based off of the direction of you, Council President.
I think that would be best. And also, if you don't mind, Mr. Sean, if you could, if you can get any data on the resources that we currently have. I know that, I don't want to misquote it, but we have that question that residents can ask on the website. Actually, I want to know like the clicks we're getting. I want to know the involvement and the kind of interactions we're having on our website thus far, because it sounds great to have, you know, this, a survey that we could use, but if residents aren't currently using the methods we have right now, then what's going to be different with this? It's just going to be a different platform, but if we're not engaging our residents now, I'm not seeing where we just insert something else in, if that's going to really make the difference. If it's just another link or another, if we're just kind of, if we're just replacing it with something else, that's what I'm not seeing. So if we had that data, that may entice us to go, okay, sure, right now, we don't have anything, and we're like, well, we have, you know, we have the question, where you can ask, you know, the questions, and we have a survey on there. The survey, we just put about the hay Salisbury residents, like, what are the clicks we're getting on that? Give us all that information, and then you may see a different tone from counsel.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. So at this time, we'll have a presentation of the survey data for transportation safety on Salisbury's West Side, presented by Ryan Weaver from Salisbury University Interdisciplinary Studies in SU Pace, the Presidential Scholars Program, and along with him are his scholars, Lamari James, Stifora Alberry, and Anderson Herman. Welcome to you all, and thank you all for coming, and we're excited to hear about the project that you've had. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Weaver.
Hi, everybody. You've known me in many capacities over the years with We Heart SBY and Remedy Church, and now I am full-time at Salisbury University, doing similar work as through those other two nonprofits that I ran way back when. Last time I was in this building, this was a music venue, and we were holding church services here. And so I'm grateful to be here with three of my students from SU. Just briefly, I am the Director of PCS. PCS stands for Presidential Citizen Scholars. It's a program that's been around for 20 years. PCS was founded many years ago specifically as a mechanism for engaging the politics of the community. Fran Cain and Harry Basheart launched Pace and PCS. And then, over the years, that's kind of evolved. I've had the directorship for about five, and a few advanced, Lamari. So with all of that, what I try to accomplish with PCS specifically is try to make sure that we are focused specifically on community issues. So scholars like these apply when they're sophomores typically, and then we, over three semesters, look at community issues. They group up around those community issues, and specifically, they move into conversations about what to do next. So, next slide. We are specifically tapped into SU's higher purpose, which is to create better citizens in the community, and that's what PCS is really founded on and founded for, to do exactly that. And then additionally, this is where I went on the website this morning to make sure it's still there, that they didn't change something for me. That's actually a screenshot from this morning on the website. That is SU's higher purpose. So real quickly, I'll allow the scholars to introduce themselves. Anderson, you want to go first?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anderson Herman. I am a junior at Salisbury University, and my major is chemistry. I am a junior at Salisbury University and my major is chemistry.
Uh, my name is Lamari James, I'm a senior and I'm Environmental Studies major.
Hello, my name is Stephora Alberry and I'm a Computer Science major and a junior. So, um, I know a lot of people will ask why the west side in particular, why not this area in Salisbury or that area or just Salisbury as a whole, cause I know we have different road issues that we have to tackle. But the reason that being is because in the west side, there are a high concentration of marginalized communities residing in that area, along with the fact that there are three schools located there, which is two being a elementary school, one being a, a middle school. So we wanted to emphasize the importance of tackling the road safety issue in that area because of those two reasons. So our mission goes hand in hand with the City of Salisbury Vision Zero Plan, which is why we're happy to, um, happy to partner with the Department of Transportation and Department of Infrastructure and Development. Um, we, they've been very helpful with this whole process and been very supportive. So, um, for our goal in particular, we wanted to investigate road, um, safety in the west area and receive feedback from the community, local community. And we did that by, um, creating a survey and we did it in three languages, that being English, Creole, and Spanish. Um, we, our survey was open from August of last year to December and we were able to successfully collect 273 respondents. And, um, ever since then, we've been scrubbing up the data, analyzing it and cleaning it up and we're, we're happy to share with you in the following slides and we will hopefully, um, with your help, we can implement some of that feedback into the roads.
So, uh, John Wilson is here tonight. Will White was our direct collaborator with John as well. Uh, Will is on assignment with the Army, I believe, right now, um, and so that's why he's not here this evening. And so this is an IRB research study. What that means is Institutional Review Board, uh, certified, so we went through the entire process. They had to complete several certifications as student researchers and I am the principal investigator. This is, and I think it's interesting that we were sandwiched between, uh, what Andy was talking about a moment ago and then what comes next, uh, on the agenda, because some of the, the data you're gonna see from the west side and from people who responded in the, that 273 are gonna talk about bike safety, pedestrian safety, and as a whole, the Vision Zero. So the questions you're gonna see roll out in the next, uh, bit of data, I just wanted to highlight that this is early, uh, so they, last week is the first week of the semester, uh, so it was our first week of really sitting down with the data and, and breaking it down over the last two weeks. Uh, they came back early, uh, for, and we presented to John and, uh, also, uh, to Brian Sober and to Will two weeks ago and Will was impressed enough, he wanted you to see it, but it is early. So we're still looking at some of your questions, we, we may not be able to answer all those yet, but we'll, we'll have the whole semester to look at that data and then I'll invite you toward the end of the presentation to the Pace Showcase on April 25th, where you can hear a full presentation, uh, of that data. So without further ado, we'll start to open up the data. Okay. Oh yeah, do you wanna talk about the, yeah, there's a survey. Thank you.
And so to represent the diverse community on the west side of Salisbury, what we did, uh, we have our survey available in three languages, English, Haitian Creole, and Spanish. And we actually closed the data, so please do not scan the Q and A codes because the survey is already closed.
So we also participated in Third Friday to actually have like, um, firsthand interaction with the community and collect data there and got stories of, um, local individuals about road safety.
All right, so total engagement, uh, we were talking just a moment ago about those clicks. We had about 634 unique clicks. The software we used was Qualtrics, just, uh, educational institutional software, uh, that's really just a platform where we can build the survey. We built the survey specifically with Will and John informing some of those questions we were asking, um, and you can see here that we had 273 actually finished. So the, those unique clicks, some of it's, uh, they maybe scanned it Third Friday, said they would do it, didn't do it. Uh, maybe it was somebody, uh, like, you know, Council President Deshaun Dowdy who maybe scanned it and didn't, didn't actually, uh, finish the survey. And some of the data you're gonna see, uh, over the next couple of slides, it's gonna be lower than 273 because every question after the first question was optional, okay? So if you're looking for 273 input on every question, we're not gonna get that. Um, the only question that was mandatory is, are you over the age of 18? Because we were not allowed to accept responses 18 and younger, uh, as a vulnerable population, we would've had to go through a whole other set of parameters to do that, much more stringent. So here comes the survey data.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. So we received 268 total survey, um, survey responses and then the largest that we had was in English and then we had 249 respondents in English, 15 responded in Haitian Creole and four of them responded in Spanish. And one important question that we asked is, are you a resident of Salisbury or what is your place of residence? And the majority of the respondents were actually Salisbury residents with a percentage of 75.4%.
So we also asked their frequency of visit in like the west side of Salisbury and so on your left, um, is the actual snapshot of the meter that we had on the survey to ask, um, whether it's never they've been to the west side of Salisbury, rarely, sometimes, um, frequently or all the time.
When you say west side, what do you mean? What, what is it defined by?
No, you respond to it. Well, okay. All right, so that's, that's kinda the point. So we wanted it to be sort of allowed to be interpreted, um, by the, the respondent, um, because west side's interpreted differently. Uh, as we know, county and city kinda blends on the west side on the fringes of the city. And I know we've spent a lot of time thinking about those white street signs and green street signs and all that recently. We've had to learn a lot about that as a community, of course, but it's also a thing where we wanted people in the qualitative, you're not gonna see really any qualitative data today, uh, because we wanted to keep it sort of brief. This is all quantitative. Qualitative, we're still starting to scrub through, it's a lot of comments. Every one of these questions had comments. So it meant something different to really everybody and we wanted it to be that. Uh, we didn't provide a map on purpose, um, because we wanted people to think, almost everybody thought from Pemberton up to, uh, say, uh, through Jersey Road up that direction, uh, but it was obvious some people were thinking even kinda Hebron Way. So it's like, you know, we've gotten pretty far in the county. Uh, but we're, again, we're just starting, starting to get into some of that. Uh, Salisbury means a lot of things to a lot of people, um, and, uh, you have you carrying the mantle of the community as you all do and elected official positions and appointed positions, you're, uh, sometimes people are gonna complain about parts of the city that aren't actually city, right? So, so that's kinda what, that's a great question, but we intended to blur those lines on purpose, um, because it is a little blurry if you look at the west side anyway on what's city and what's not. Good question.
Um, on the survey, we asked our respondents, what was their common form of transportation and a majority of them said personal, um, personal vehicle and some said walk, bicycle, foot scooter, taxi, carpool and such.
And then we asked, what are some implementation that we can actually do to make the west side of Salisbury safer by coming traffic? And the majority of them responded sidewalks, street light, and crosswalk will make the community safer.
Additionally on that, um, with the qualitative data at the Pace Showcase, I think we'll be able to show more about what people meant by that on some of the places. So, uh, we have qualitative data in all three languages that communicates, hey, here's, here's what I'm talking about. So sometimes when they say crosswalks, they're talking about a very specific crosswalk and we'll be able to cross-reference some of that. Again, it's super early in the semester for them, um, and by the end of the semester, we'll be able to hopefully give more of a geo-location idea where people are talking about where they wanted more street lights, uh, and safety and such. Um, one of the comments I, I found pretty funny is somebody said with roundabouts that they thought we should remove all roundabouts because people over here don't know how to drive roundabouts. Well, then one of those thoughts is, well, maybe if we had more roundabouts, people would learn how to drive a roundabout. So, so that's the kinda funny stuff we're gonna get into, but also importantly, you need to kinda think about as well.
Okay, and another question that we asked, um, our respondents was whether they believed that the roads in the west side were safe for wa, to walk for individuals and 75.8% said no and 24.2% said yes, so a good majority said.
So we also asked the question whether or not the roads are safe for biking and so over 50% of our respondents said no, that the roads are not safe for biking and about only 30%, or 36% said yes.
Uh, so we, um, we're gonna present, uh, in a, in a week or two, uh, we've gotta get through a couple of things with the beginning of the semester, but we're in communication now with Shore Transit to meet, uh, with the folks there. This was a question Will wanted us to include, um, and again, we're just starting to get into this, but one of the, the questions that he wanted us to ask was about bus stops. I know there, there's a lot of stuff with Shore Transit that they're looking at with budget shortcuts and, um, trying to, to move more mobile with smaller vehicles, so, uh, maybe temporary stops, but we had many responses that were Haitian responses and Haitian Creole from these, uh, bits here. Uh, a person could click every spot, they, they could click, it wasn't just click one or it wasn't binary in any way, it would be yes or no, they could click every one. And you can see out of 199 responses, a, a lot of people did click every one. There were many responses in Creole specifically talking about that they, they wanted more transportation to, uh, different locations all over the city from Walmart to, in Fruitland to Walmart on the north side to other specific locations. But again, we're gonna carry that data out to Shore Transit in the next couple of weeks and let them see that data as well, uh, with Will. Um, I'll also do the next one, uh, qualitative mentions. Uh, I know we didn't get into qualitative stuff with you today, we will by the Pace Showcase, um, but this is just a keyword search that Stephora did, she's a computer science major, so one of the key points of the PCS program is its interdisciplinary. I teach specifically as a professor in the interdisciplinary, uh, program, the, the department at Salisbury University, so this is a key measurable for us. We don't want students who are just communication majors working together collaboratively. Um, all three have different majors here and all three have different measurables that'll be resume building stuff for them, uh, beyond this. And so for Stephora, that computer science piece came into play. She did through a, a, a word search, a keyword search and phrase search through all the qualitative data and, uh, streetlights, uh, were, were there, mentioned quite a bit, sidewalks obviously the most, uh, bike lanes also, again, speaking to what's coming next in the conversation for you this evening, uh, and then also crosswalks and then the bus bit. So, um, we hope to have more of that, uh, broken down later. And then, uh, before we move to some Q and A, um, we, uh, on April 25th, the scholars will be sending out an email to you in a couple of weeks to get this on your calendar, but you're invited. Uh, you can see actually, uh, former Mayor Jack Heath there on the left at the bottom last year, this is the, the Pace Showcase, so, uh, Mayor Taylor, we're hoping you show up as well, a little pressure being put on you there. Uh, put it on the calendar, uh, community members are, are welcome as well, just reach out to me via email or, uh, through Pace and, uh, we would love for, for all of you, uh, Council President attended just, uh, a few weeks ago, their update before the data was finalized and got to see a sneak peek of this. Um, so just, just know that, that you're invited to that and, and we want you to see that data, but also Will and John will have full access to that, uh, over the next, uh, the next bit, so. We move with that, I think into any questions you may have for us.
I do. What time? Yeah, what time is that event?
Yeah, that's, that was a, the time. Right now, it's at 2:00 PM. May shift slightly, but right now, 2:00 PM. They'll send you an official time in a couple of weeks. You're on the agenda.
Communicate with, uh, yep.
With Kim.
With Kim, sure.
You got it.
Now I do have some questions.
Sure.
Um, how, you said Jersey Road, that, that's how far you, you had gone. Did you go Lake Street to Jersey Road or you went all the way up to Nellie Road with Jersey Road?
So we went to Jersey Road specifically for the big Haitian church, the Word of Life Center. This is why we went there, but what we found is that there is like a lot of like confusion be, be, because like some part of the Jersey Road side is on Salisbury and then the other part is county.
No. Not one part of Jersey Road is city.
It's Lake turns to city.
It's, it's county and Lake Street, it has stopped said, I think, um...
Right before Billie Jean.
Yeah, bef, be, no, um, Lakeview, Lakeview.
And again, the, the point really was, we wanted people to define what.
No, I'm not trying to criticize anything, I'm just trying to find out some questions of how far they, they went into the city. And how was this survey implemented? Was it online or?
Um, it was through, um, Qualtrics. Um, we had a, so based on the flyer, we had a QR code that people could access for the Qualtrics link for the survey. Um, yeah, it was ma, mostly online, um, when we went out on Third Friday or when we went out to the Word of Life Center for them to take the survey, um, we asked them to take out their phones so that they could take, scan the QR code and go online.
It was through mobile phones? It was not through paper at all?
No, no, and that, and I, I'm, apparently that's what I'm thinking, but I'm thinking, okay, you're connecting with people on, at the Third Friday. Yes. Okay. How do you determine whether they live on the west side? Because some of them probably didn't even live on the west side. I mean, I'm not complaining about anything you're doing because what you're doing is a marvelous job, but I want to be precise about how we're doing this and if you're getting people that, you know, that aren't, that don't live on the west side, how can they make comments? They can just fill out a survey, but they don't have to live there on the west side of Salisbury.
I think for, um, I think that's one of our questions, I need to play for that, was when we asked the frequency of how much they traveled over there.
Okay, it was travel.
Yes, so like how much they visit the west side, um, so we took into account for that, cause we knew that was going to be, you know, come up.
Yeah.
Like some people, like, we couldn't just like ban everyone, you know, like people who, you could've came from, you know, Fruitland.
Fruitland, yeah, but you wanna know how much they visit that area.
Yeah, so we wanted to filter out, you know, that possibility too, so that's why we asked that question specifically.
And about the frequency of visits, that's one of the things that the Pace Showcase will be able to collate that data and look at those, for example, who say all the time, that they go there all the time, meaning I live there, that's what it could mean.
Yeah.
Um, but we didn't ask for specific addresses.
Okay.
In fact, if they gave a specific address, I went in and blacked it out.
Yeah.
Because we, that, that's part of the anonymity, we didn't wanna see that. That did happen a couple of times and that was our job to go in and scrub that data and remove that bit, cause we didn't wanna do.
No, I appreciate everything you've done because you've come up with some marvelous ideals and some of the things that I've been actually, you know, standing in place with the crosswalks, the bike lanes, because I've had people say, I've had some people on the west side say, we don't need the bike lanes, but then I have other people who say, yes, we do, and then I have particularly some people, like one, one young man, he asked me, he said, Ms. April, how do you like the, um, bike lanes? And I said, no, you give me your opinion of the bike lanes. And he said, I think if we had those bike lanes, my father would still be living. So I'm just, you know, these are things that I think about even when, where I live at right now, across from Pemberton, I spoke to, and he wasn't even the mayor at that time, Jake Day, to get that crosswalk implemented over there in the Pemberton and Waterside or Village Mitchell Pond area for safety, because we have children going to school and it wasn't a crosswalk there at all. So what you're doing and I applaud you for what you're doing and continue to do it. Thank you.
Speaking of Waterside, um, their cohort has four projects going and one of the other projects is an NFL flag football program that we're in the process right now, working with Rachel Manning to bring that to the community. It's gonna be in partnership with Parks and Rec for the county too, so we can expand it out, uh, but specifically, uh, one of the, the measurables for their project is Waterside to have football there.
Waterside Park.
And so that's coming, that's coming. They're not ready yet, but I'm giving them a little blurb too, since you brought up Waterside. And that's been in partnership also with, with Deshaun from the beginning, you know, with Green Street and your current role.
Absolutely, yeah.
Other questions for us?
Any questions from council?
Very impressive if this is just the start.
It's, it's, it is wonderful, I wanna chime on that and I just wanna say also that, that the university is such a remarkable asset to our city and we appreciate it and it's so great to see the students be involved in the community, um, as they study here. So we are hoping that you wanna stay here.
Yes.
We need bright minds to stay and I'm just very, very impressed with the project, the reason and the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it had to take something pretty big to pull me away from Remedy Church and We Heart SBY.
Yeah.
These students are the reason I made that transition because they are, they're exactly the, the investment that we wanna be making and, uh, we're very grateful for the opportunity. This is the first PCS project to come before you and, uh, hope to bring others your way down the road. And President Lapree sends her regards as well. She, this is a program called Presidential Citizens Scholars because of the connection to Eli Modlin in the president's office, so, uh, very much right there in the heart of it.
Thank you.
If no other questions, thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
One more?
That was for Zinn City.
Okay, oh, okay.
Unless anybody else.
Okay, well, we appreciate you all for, uh, for coming out, and, and we look forward to seeing the other data in a few more months, so we, we look forward to seeing your hard work, thank you.
I applaud you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Zinn City.
Okay, so we have another, we have a public comment on our previous agenda item that we may have, uh, missed, if we wanna bring forward that, that individual. And also while, while Mr. Taylor's walking up, I just wanna remind the, uh, the public and, and folks that if you are in the, in the public, to keep your comments, uh, so while it may be a whisper to you, uh, the noise does travel in this room. So if, if you're whispering, uh, your, your noise travels all over, and so I wanna remind everyone just to make sure you're being mindful of that and be respectful of persons that are speaking and to the council members and administration here, so, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, if I can, I'll speak to the, the two presentations so far this evening, and I wanna reiterate what was just said about the last presentation, I thought that was excellent. And I'm glad I'm speaking at, to both of them now, because I think the second presentation shows why we don't need the subject of the first presentation. We don't really need that for a couple of reasons, I mean, we have the local talent to do this sort of thing. Yeah, I could probably nitpick what they just presented and come up with some constructive suggestions, but I've had a little experience with surveys and things, and I thought it was pretty darn good. Now, getting back to the first, um, the concern with anything like getting an independent agency involved is really twofold, actually threefold, there's the cost, I'm just putting that off to one side, because that's not the greatest concern. The greatest concern is that the data can be gained, it can be gained externally, and it can be gained internally. Internally, depends on how the questions, how the things are presented. Many items, you have to present a lot of background information before you can get any kind of a reasonable public response. For, for example, um, we had a presentation by the group, and they mentioned the downtown master plan. Well, where we're, where we are now, as somebody just said, under the master plan, this would be a recreation type area, and it was for a while, but it didn't work, hasn't been changed in the master plan. So you get, I mean, that's just one example, and I'm just cutting, you could peel back the layers of the onion and come up with all kinds of things. Salisbury Town Center Apartments, that's another good example. And the other part of it is that externally, you can have some of the questions that were just raised with the second presentation by the PACE group, about, well, how do you know that that was someone Salisbury resident? Well, you have exactly the same thing with the independent consulting room, these things can be gained, and we really don't need it, because it doesn't, it's garbage in, garbage out, the old rule of computer science, the first thing I learned. And that's what you get with, with things like that, but it looks official, because they have nice PowerPoints, they present things in documents, and oh boy, we've looked at all this, we have experts, and this, that, and the other, we have plenty of experts right here in town. We don't need that stuff, and I congratulate the group again, I see that laugh, thank you.
Thank you. It seems that the other comments are referencing our next item, so again, we'll hear about a budget amendment to reallocate funds from the Main Street Master Plan. We'll bring up DID Director Rick Baldwin. Good to see you, Mr. Baldwin.
Always good to be seen.
Rick, you also have Will online if you want him to jump in, he's, he's up here too.
Thank you. Counsel, good to see you, President Doughty.
Good to see you as well.
As was mentioned earlier, what we're gonna talk about is a local match.
Oh, yes, if you don't mind.
Am I loud enough now? Again, as, uh, mentioned earlier, what we're gonna talk about is a Transportation Alternatives Program grant, this is for the local match to that grant program from the Maryland Department of Transportation. This grant is to design remaining eight point nine miles of bikeways throughout the city, mostly in the streets. The request is for a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which would come from funds no longer needed for the Main Street Master Plan since that construction's been completed. This is a twenty percent match, so the funding from the state is five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, the total being seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So there's immediately a return on investment to the city, investing the one hundred and forty-nine to leverage the five hundred and ninety-seven from the state. But the return does not stop there, after these funds have been expended, the local and state monies serve as a match towards the Safe Streets for All grant. So the final leverage would be, or the additional leverage would be three point seven million in federal dollars. That's the basis of the request to continue to work on the network initially proposed in two thousand and sixteen, and frequently a topic of discussion with this council.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, any comments, question from council?
Hello, I have a question. Where will these bike lanes, um, where are these bike lanes being designated, these eight point nine miles of bike lanes, where will they be?
So I apologize, we'll not be able to quote you the exact locations of those eight point nine miles, but it is within the network, it's the complete network that is in the master plan.
So it's the same footprint, the footprint for the bike lanes have not changed?
That's correct.
So if you are thinking about that, in the city of Salisbury, essentially the bikeways master plan includes, or possible, the opportunity to increase bike lanes in some form. So if you don't see a bike lane right now, and it could potentially have one, that would be where we'd be designing and executing, so along city streets where there's opportunities for an expanded network. I can make sure council gets a copy of the bikeways master plan that includes a network, what exists now, and then also what is being planned or proposed in the grant, it is included in that grant application, which I don't believe, I'm not sure if it was included in the pack, I don't think the full application, but I can get that over to everybody.
Okay, so the only question that I have is, I'm sure someone from the public would, would ask, you know, again, the, the two words, bike, bike lane, so if we don't, uh, what, what's the implication to the city if, if we don't match the twenty percent there? I know that these are grant funds here, if, if, if that doesn't happen.
We would be returning the five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to the state.
Could you just repeat that, I want you just to, could you, could you say that again, please?
If we do not provide the local grant, we will be returning the five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to the state.
Thank you.
And on top of that, not having the local match of the seven fifty means the federal funding that we got from Streets, Safe Streets for All, that is specifically for the construction of these bike lanes, if you haven't designed them, you can't construct them, so that's five million dollars worth of federal funding that we'd not be able to use.
Thank you. And I think we have a couple of comments from the public, a couple more, Alexander McCray. If you don't mind, state your name and your address for the record, please.
I have to find my notes now, um, my name is Alexander McCray, I am not a city resident, I am a resident of Bardella Springs, Maryland, and, um, but I am a member of the B-PAC, and I am also a member of like, a, a, a member of running and biking clubs in and around Salisbury. I have a, um, oh yeah, start my time, I don't wanna run, all right, I'm getting better at this. I do, I do, uh, my bike club does host a race that brings some people in, hopefully would generate some revenue, but I guess maybe that revenue goes more to the county, but still, bring the people in, and that's good. Safe access to bike and walking has benefits to health, property value, uh, property values, uh, property development. Uh, people who come in on bikes, uh, stop more often, and they spend more when they go into, uh, retail businesses along the way, and it also has benefits for workforce transportation. I do have links to some of these studies that, uh, that show this information, and I will provide that in an email after the meeting, but I'll, I'll do that, so that's my piece. It's good for the, uh, it's good for more than just getting all of the federal matching monies, it also has a lot of other benefits, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a John Foley.
My name is John Foley, I live on four zero nine Pythons Avenue here in Salisbury. Anecdotally, uh, just before the trail was completed on Waverly, uh, on which I ride my bike frequently to work, um, I had to hug and hang on to the bed of the pickup truck as it passed me and then proceeded to turn in front of me to the hospital. And I had a very frank but polite conversation with a woman who was driving it, uh, who has a steel cage wrapped around her while I do not. So, um, just a couple of statistics here, and then I'll, I'll go sit back down. Cyclists and pedestrians make up fourteen percent of all traffic fatalities, although federal funding per per, per person and bicyclist, uh, projects is approximately two percent, two percent of those trips, um, or federal transportation budget. Five million dollars is, is a lot of money, um, to, uh, to bring forth to the table and to, to help us out. Far away from Maryland, um, there was a study that was done, the Iowa Bicycle Coalition commissioned the, the University of Northern Iowa to produce an economic impact study in two thousand and eleven. Found the following, that commuter and recreational bicycling in Iowa generated more than four hundred million dollars in economic activity, resulting in a health savings of eighty-seven million dollars. Among twenty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-one bicycle commuters, uh, the economic activity that they contributed was fifty-one million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, fifty-one million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, about two thousand eighty-five dollars per person. The health savings was thirteen million two hundred and sixty-six thousand and twenty dollars, averaging about five hundred and thirty-two dollars per person. Among the recreational riders, uh, more, uh, it was a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen, uh, people, the, the economic activity was three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, almost three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars contributed, about twenty-four hundred dollars per person. And the individual health savings, um, was about four hundred and ninety-three dollars per person, or the total of, total of about seventy-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two, seventy-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. That's significant, I can't cite the spanning time that that was, uh, but money is money, whether it's two weeks or twenty years. And not less important is the health and well-being of people who try to get around town, thank you.
Thank you. You have Met Drew?
Good afternoon. Is my time so?
Sorry, actually, when you sat down earlier.
It's my first time. So, thanks for inviting me, uh, my, Matt Drew, I live at three oh one North Timmont Drive here in Salisbury. Um, I've been involved in bike advocacy here in Salisbury since two thousand and twelve, I look back and it's been quite a long time, and we as a community, I, I think we should be really proud of ourselves, we've come quite a long way, we've made a lot of investment as a community into many different individual bike lane initiative projects. Some of them have gone really well, but I think we've also had the courage as a community to address the ones that haven't gone well, and we've gone back and fixed them. So I think we should be proud of ourselves for, for taking something that we've never had before as a community a decade ago, and now we're starting to really think seriously about how we want to address bike lanes for our community. I heard today, sixty-four percent of the people who live on the west side don't think it's safe to ride a bicycle, um, that's, that's our community, and, and that's our community, whether those folks, you know, live on the city line or the county line, they are our community. So, I, I think this investment in our community, as, as Rick well described, greatly leverages a lot of outside dollars to bring the kind of improvements, um, that we wanna bring to the community. I think our city staff have almost professionalized the idea of how we develop bike lanes, we don't do them as one-off projects anymore. I think the example, um, from the last work session, and I feel like it was a month ago that I went to, but it's when the Armstrong Parkway, um, presentation was made. I think the idea of having these kind of gate reviews of bike lane projects, so that we don't just simply do something in a vacuum, design it, um, build it, and then, and then it's rolled out, and we find out there's problems with it, we bring the whole community along, and that's what's happening right now. And I, and I think we're gonna see that same approach by the city staff in, in taking this investment, taking, being good stewards of this investment, and bringing, um, these needed improvements to our community. So, I support this investment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have Von Sigger, Siggers?
Good evening, Von Sigger, six thirteen Fitzwater Street, I am a biker, I thoroughly enjoy biking, I appreciate the safety and the security that you build into, getting us around the area without an accident. But I would like to tell you that the bike lane that you constructed on Fitzwater Street has been an absolute obstruction to safety, particularly in front of my residents. You not only took my private driveway, you took all the street parking, and you turned my driveway into public parking. So I, I have little appreciation for the vision that has been portrayed, but I do appreciate safety. So I would ask that some of those funds perhaps can be used for going back and correcting some of the ill-perceived, in fact, it's been, it's, it's been so poorly designed, it seemed almost spiteful. I can't even tell you how many people have stopped at my residence to try to understand, how is it that you could even put such a big obstruction in front of someone's house and take your personal parking space and street parking as well? Fortunately, there's a business in the area that provides a parking space that I can utilize. I would also like to say, there have been so many accidents from that obstruction that you put in front of my house, just like vehicles just exploding when they go past there and hit that thing. There has been some improvement, because you put a twig in there to resemble a tree that they can see sticking up out of the street, but if the water is high enough, that's, could be the stake, there have been so many accidents. I would be interested in knowing how many times you've been sued, and if you haven't, they have been very merciful to you. But I would like to personally ask if you would take a look at that and reconfigure that, and make it so much more appealing and suitable for residents. I'm invested in the city, been invested for decades, and I would like to ask that you take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Buffington?
I am a chair of the VPAC committee, as many of our committee members are here, and I'm here to support this. There's a current study that's going on of the entire Eastern Shore region, except for Cecil County, of Maryland counties. And the city of Salisbury has the most robust and comprehensive bike plan of all of the counties. And I'm just really proud to be living in an area that is so supportive of bike and pedestrian. Pedestrian gets overlooked in our committee quite a bit, but it is an important issue as well. So please continue to support bicycle and pedestrian safety in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just seeing no other public comments, either in person or online. Do we have consensus from council to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, but could I say something?
Sure.
I went for Ms. Siggers. That was an obstruction in front of her house. And I do, I agree with her 100% that that does need to be moved. And it was discussed a few years ago about that same location, about her and I, and some came up and we talked about it. And it does need to be moved. She lives there. She has to park in a parking lot that somebody else has a business. She's parking in a business parking lot. She can't park in her own residence. So could we make sure that we correct that?
Do you want me to respond to that?
If you would like, sure.
Well, Ms. Siggers and Matt Drew, your comments both go together very well, in the sense that while we have been at this for years, we have gotten better, and there are certainly earlier designs which have been in the process of being corrected. The mayor and administrator certainly emphasize and carry those issues forward and have been part of the process of, like Armstrong, making sure that these are reviewed and improved as we go forward. Fitzwater is frequently one of the items on that agenda. Next is West College and Camden, and I would imagine that Fitzwater should not be too far behind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one comment I want to make. I think one of the challenges, I think, you know, nobody's, I think everybody's supportive of bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-friendly streets. I think part of our frustration, of course, have been designs that are incompatible with vehicular traffic, which some would acquiesce and say, yeah, we see where your point, others not so much. So that's where I, I think one of the challenges from the beginning has been, I think, that we've got a bunch of streets approved, but not a plan approved. They just sort of kind of executed the plan. People went, what are we doing? To the point where we actually ended up doing the biggest project twice, which is Waverly, which we don't want to do that again. And we certainly want to have a circulation of bicycle paths that makes sense. For example, in front of my house on North Camden, there's not really enough room to put a bike path, that I'm aware of. Maybe there is, I don't know, but I would be concerned. But as an example, that's right off the circle, right off the downtown. Again, so all I'd say is definitely leveraging the dollars, definitely leveraging the grants, taking 140, turning it into $3.5 million improvements, absolutely. But I think what we need to be is very cognizant of how we plan these things, and how we, and that we don't buy into a concept that's like, you know, that's incongruent with the rest of us and our needs as well. You know, not to make them unsafe by any means, but certainly, that's all I would say.
Sure. All right, so we're hearing that we will address some of the earlier designs, and we'll keep that moving forward. So just for the record, again, do you have consensus from council to move this forward?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bulley. All right. So next we'll hear from Deputy Chief Chris Obarski, only accepting Community Foundation of Eastern Shore's grant for SWIFT.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you, everybody?
Fine.
Good. Yes, coming in for you. This has been a couple-year partnership with the Community Foundation. We've received grants before. This is for our SWIFT program, allows us, gives us funding, because one of the main things that we found with our SWIFT program was transportation, which probably most people wouldn't realize that, but it was kind of an eye-opening experience for us. So this is just an additional grant that they've awarded to us of $1,500 to go towards transportation needs.
Fantastic. Fantastic. And the SWIFT program is wonderful. I know every year we get a big presentation on those stats. I think it'll be coming up in the later spring, probably.
Yep.
But council, any comments?
No.
Councilwoman Gregory, do you have any comments about the grant?
No, just love to see the money coming in. Excuse me.
None? Okay.
This is a fabulous project, and it works, and it's continuing to work, and it's needed.
Absolutely.
Any comments, President?
No comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm gonna stay up here for my buddy. I'm the backup.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to see each and every one of you. Thank you.
That didn't sound very sincere.
It's extremely sincere.
That's better.
So this ordinance that you have in front of you is just a bit of housekeeping. So many years ago, the city adopted a life safety and fire prevention code. And it's, at the time that it was adopted, you didn't have a fire marshal, so it was kind of enforced by multiple different departments. Sometime back, we had very similar legislation, almost exactly, with the building department. Just clarifying our role to enforce the life safety and fire prevention code. So that it was, the message was coming from one department rather than two or three departments. It's better for business, better for everyone involved.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Thank you. Just one question. Does any of this address in the wording, would it cover, I guess the fire department or the fire marshal doesn't have the ability to write tickets for people who park in the fire lanes. Where is that in here? I'm sure it is somewhere.
Well, I'm glad you asked. This is an issue that we've been discussing in the fire department for a while. I just had one of our lieutenants just attack me a couple hours ago because he wants to write tickets for people in fire lanes. So it may be something that you're going to be seeing in the near future. But it's not in this, it's not included in this. This is strictly just enforcing the fire and life safety code inside of multiple family residential units, everything but one or two family homes.
Right. That's what it is. Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay.
So it's not in this, but you might be making that decision at some point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments or questions from council? We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll discuss the council rules of order and code of conduct. So I think the best way we can do this is just go item by item, just to make sure that we have any questions or comments from council. So we're going to go over the regulations and rules of order first. I think everyone has a printed copy.
President Doughty, can I make a comment before we get started on this?
I printed it out.
Oh, you printed it out.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
One of the things going through this material, probably for four to six weeks, I've noticed is there is a variety of publications that address this. First, we have MML that talks about the adopting or understanding the executive and administrative branches, council code of conduct. So we have that. We have the current code of conduct that we go by, which was adopted on April 28, 2014. And in the items that are listed, or the amendments that were adopted, there is, it's not listed, but there was a Resolution 1513 that was passed on 4/24/07 that deals with code of conduct, but is not listed on our code of conduct. And then we have, in our orientation, there's several, there's procedural things, too, in our orientation that we receive. So one of the things that I think is interesting is, I think if you want to go line by item or line by line, that we're going by currently, we could. I'm wondering if, because we have so many, it seems like it's fragmented and spread out through different forms of documentation or packets that the council is given, if we shouldn't have a committee looking at this to consolidate it and to make it a fluid, real current fluid, live, actionable thing. Not that our current code of conduct is not written well, I'm not saying that there's, but as you can see, it just seems, from orientation to MML to current, to some things that aren't even listed on the, I guess, amended list, it might behoove us, before we go into a deep dive of line by line, is looking at, a committee to consolidate this or make recommendations, and then going through it. I don't know what anyone else thinks about that.
So I guess, well, one, it just raises two things. One, I know we've pushed this back from December, and there are some things, just to make sure that we're moving fluid as a council, as we have two new members and three existing members, and just to make sure everyone's on the same page. I would like us to kind of go over the cursory things, but if you, I think that would be good, because like you said, I've gone through and looked at, there's different revisions and amendments, and making this our own in detail, and like you said, enforceable, would be decent. I want to hear thoughts from other, from...
Would it be helpful to just go through it and add our comments to update it, since the one we're looking at, I'm looking at the regulations and rules of order?
2014.
Dated 2014. If we just add input to that, and then do what Angela is suggesting to consolidate for the final project?
And so Angela, do you have a suggestion as to who should, that committee or who should be on that or leading that?
Well, I would always, I think maybe one or two council people, but I really would like to have, I know we've been having a slew of volunteers come forward for all other committees. I mean, I know this would be like a very targeted, short-term thing, but maybe if anyone from the public would be interested in it, or past council people who might have ideas, or...
Just as a comment, cursory comment, looking at it, is talking about the high level, what you want to do, but I'm looking all the way down to the end of the table, our council. We are able to set up a special meeting, if they wanted to, to go into a deep dive into this and bring anybody else into it, and just focus just on this topic at any time, at any point, if there was additional things. But high level, talk about what you want to accomplish, how you want to accomplish it, when you want to accomplish it. Because if you want to go line by line, I think there's a deep dive you guys probably want to go through. Find an hour, make sure you're dedicated to kind of going through it, if you want to do that level of extensive review, and bring in anybody else that you may would think would be valuable to that conversation specifically, kind of in a special work session or special meeting, but that's...
I think that's what I've been wanting, but I, so I was just speaking with Kim and Julie, city clerk and assistant city clerk, about having a goal, kind of a goal-setting, or even a council retreat. So that's along those same lines. So I have Kim and Julie looking at some dates that we can do that in the very near future, just to, again, deep dive into this. But if we could just kind of go, I guess, high level into this, make sure we're on the same page for now, because again, we all are, you know, three months into our roles, and I think this is good to just know kind of where we are, you know, where the rules and regulations are, and then we can go from there to a deeper dive. Okay. All right, so just seeing, first, again, we're all in item number two, about attendance and participation. So council members should be physically present. So I think, again, since we do have Zoom options, this would be something to kind of make sure that we discuss. Again, just to make sure that we're saying virtual or in-person, I know it's mentioned under it, but again, shall be physically present to vote. I think that came up last meeting about voting or not if you're virtual. So council thoughts on that?
I think if you're virtual, you should be entitled to vote.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, that's how we, I believe, excuse me, I believe we had adopted some sort of rules back when COVID first hit, because we were all on Zoom. I can't remember exactly what it was, but, you know, I know that we had tweaked it. So, I mean, given my current situation, where we have family illnesses going on, it's virtually impossible for me to attend in person, at least for the next few weeks. So, you know, in the interest of making it accessible for folks who are disabled, for folks who are dealing with something like what I'm dealing with right now, you know, I really think that the Zoom option is perfectly fine.
Okay. It sounds like we have...
I just want to...
Go ahead, Angela.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I think Zoom option is good as well. But one of the questions that did come up is voting in, having Zoom in closed session, and voting in closed session, and I don't know if we need to have legal chime in with that, because we were unsure if we could guarantee the security of that.
So a closed session, we don't vote ever in closed session. So it would just be, I think this covers our regular council meetings. I think for a closed meeting, we want to have someone there in person.
Okay.
So closed session, so this will state, Zoom will be appropriate for voting if you, if it's a regular session, but if we do a closed session, you have to be in person.
Correct. To participate.
Okay. All right. Sounds like that's...
And that does not need to be clarified in this section from an attendance standpoint? Probably not, that's just implied.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, moving forward, three, again, we all know about changing the, adding in city headquarters there, and the current address, let's see, moving down. Again, if anyone sees anything that may, that needs to drop forward. Again, I think having a conversation on the agendas and when they're posted. I had a question to the city clerks about if that timeline still makes sense. So if you all want to discuss them yourselves, and just make sure that that timeline still kind of is, you know, fluid for you all. So I would think about that for our retreat and work session moving forward. Going forward, C, option C there under four with the agendas. I know that that question came up, so again, we can go into a deeper dive with making a public comment, but it is saying that it should be requested in writing about an item being placed on the agenda from the mayor, council member of the public, so...
Where are you on this?
I'm sorry.
C.
Three, four, C.
Four, C. Okay.
Would writing include an email?
And that's what I think, so again, because in writing, I think that's antiquated, so I think we should clarify email or electronic submission, or something like that. Again, I'll let the legalese get the verbiage.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, 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 I was, I caught up, never mind.
E, I know that Sharon, you had a question about number four and E, about the, do you have your comments?
Yes. I feel that members of the public should be able to address the council on items, even if they are not on the agenda. And I don't know why that was removed from the version of 2007. I think it should be put back in, just because I think they should be allowed to do that.
I think, I think the reason why that was, there was a period of time where the same people were coming and bringing up the same issue, even though it had been decided several months ago. And it was dragging out meetings, and I don't know whether that's fully accurate or not, but my recollection is that's why they made, so we may be able to set a limit, maybe, on the number of times it can be brought.
I just think it's important, if someone wants to speak to the council, we should respect them.
the version of 2007. I think it should be put back in, just because I think they should be allowed to do that.
I think, I think the reason why that was, it was, there was a period of time where the same people were coming and bringing up the same issue, even though it had been decided several months ago. And it was, it was dragging out meetings, and I don't know whether that's fully accurate or not, but my recollection is that's why they made, so we may be able to set a limit, maybe, on the number of times it can be brought...
I just think it's important, if someone wants to speak to the council, we should respect that and acknowledge it, even if it doesn't suit our agenda.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I agree.
And the other piece, and I know that Mr. Kitzro and I talked about this at one point, putting updates as part of the agenda, I don't know if that follows Robert's Rules of Order, but I feel that if something is discussed in January, it's presented, it's discussed, I think it is respectful to council members as well as the public to have an update on that, if needed, at the next meeting, or at some point acknowledge that this just didn't get put in File 13.
Yeah, just to add on to that, so typically it says Administration and Council Comments. The question being, we've been limited on just comments rather than updates, but I can easily expand what we were talking about with your permission, or if your desire to have some sort of updates that falls in that section, on specific updates, or if you request an update for the following meeting, we can just come prepared as is possible. However you need to memorialize or request that, we would be open to that direction.
It's a selfish comment, because I really feel that you may have presented something, and then I would have no idea how to give an update, but you would. So then we would ask, so we'd go through Kim to ask to have that put on the agenda for an update, specifically the item you wanted updated. Is that correct? Is that what you're thinking, Andy?
Sure, it could be a couple different ways. If during public comment, somebody had a question and wanted further, we may not answer that question in real time, but if at the direction of the president or council said, hey, can we get an update or clarification on that question at the next meeting? We could do it that way. Or if it was something, hey, I know we got presented, something passed, can we get an update on that? You can let me know in advance or during the meeting for us to then prepare ourselves. So that may would need an assist from my team to gather information.
Sure.
And try to keep it brief, but direct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I think, and again, we'll detail that further in our retreat, but that's something that I want to, for council to move forward, is in our legislative, you know, sessions, is that we, you know, take part of our council comment, and in detail what you've done in the previous two weeks. So, again, I've attended this meeting, or I've done, you know, spoke with this person, or, you know, I went to this legislative, you know, just kind of details it, again, the public is seeing the work that we're doing, and the strong work we're doing, but that's, that's a, you know, sort of a suggested update from council that it's, so I think, I think that would be something good. Or even if we actually put it in the actual agenda as an item of council, then you have, you know, three minutes to detail exactly what you've done in the last month or two weeks. So, that's a good point, councilwoman, to show. E, F, G, five, the conduct of regular meetings.
E, F, G.
I didn't have any comments until item E, any other?
I'm just trying to keep up with you.
Sure. So I'm on five, conduct of regular meetings, page four.
This was something that was brought to my attention about council members being on their cell phones. A, someone who has volunteered with the shelter, her son presented something to the council and was disturbed because council members were on their cell phones while he was speaking. I don't know how you addressed this, I just, it was a concern that was brought to my attention.
I actually had to reverse and go back to paper to write notes. I have a note section on my phone. So sometimes, or if there's an email that came directly to my phone, or sometime, it may look like that, but it's not like that. And if, I don't know how to do that. There was a, you know, there's a notepad section on your phone, too, you keep notes on, which are typically easier than me carrying around a notebook. But I had to buy a big bulky notebook to start writing notes down. So I don't know how to address that either. I think that, did Ms. Gregory have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, like, there's times too, there's been a couple of times where I've showed up and realized that I left my laptop charger at home and my laptop dead. So like, there's, that's the only means I would have to, in that sort of case, to access the agenda, or, like you said, write something down, put an event on a calendar, that sort of thing. Like, we just, we were just asking the time of that, of the event coming up with pace. So, I mean, I think I remember the incident that you're speaking of, and if I recall correctly, I believe it was innocuous, something like that. But I remember having a conversation with the mom afterwards, and tried to explain that, but I don't think it was received well. I understand the concern, but a lot of times that's, you know, I'll use my calendar on my phone more than I'll use my calendar on my, on my computer, that sort of thing. So that's, I think that'd be tricky to, I just think that would, that would be something that we would ask that, you know, folks be understanding, and also that council members be attentive.
And then there's some times when you might have someone on Zoom who has a question, because they messed, made a misinterpret something, and they'll text you. If they know your number, they'll text you and ask you the question.
Yeah. So I think it's just being mindful. So as the, as the millennial of the group, you know, again, we're tasked, or we're known as being on our phones all the time, but if you notice, I put my phones face down so that even in case you would not, because it's perception. I don't want anyone thinking that I wasn't giving them attention. My laptop is here just because of the notes, but I often, I use paper, just because I don't want that implication. So, and again, I understand, if you left your phone, or your laptop at home, you have to go on your phone for the agenda, that makes complete sense. But we want to make sure that we're showing the public that we're paying their full attention. So if, you know, just a quick glance is cool. You know, going back to college, you know, I would have some professors that would, if you touched your phone, that's it, you're out of the class, and you're, you know, you're automatic, you know, you get, especially if it's only an exam. So I think, just going back to that, just make sure if it's a quick glance or quick, you know, looking at something, then that's fine. But just be mindful of that is...
Just had a comment on G in that same section as we were...
So if you want to, just, is it G?
G, yeah, and five, G. Just kind of in more of a generality, it says City Administrator or City Department Head, we heard from the Fire Marshal today and Deputy Chief Obarski. I'm assuming that extends to designee also. So where it says, you may call upon the City Administrator Clerk or City Department Head, or designee probably, whoever the expert is, whoever is available to make the commentary. I'm John, maybe sitting in the seat instead of me sometimes. So just, I don't want us to be shortsighted. And that kind of goes with the whole document, whenever they say mayor or city administrators, making sure it's kind of interchangeable if necessary.
That's a good, that's a good note. So my only, with this comment is E. So again, I think just because of my, you know, just making sure that we're not speaking ahead of each other, just, again, just to, you know, if you want to get, you know, the attention of the council president, or whoever is initiating or controlling the meeting, just to make sure that, again, someone is called, and that there's not just comments going everywhere. Same for mayor and admin, just however you want to, as a consensus, get the attention, to make sure that we're all getting the time to respond and, you know, to comment, and sort of, instead of comments just kind of flying out everywhere. So that's kind of a key thing for, for myself, to make sure that we're all doing these meetings well, I think, as orderly, as, however you all want to get the attention of the person who's leading the meeting. I leave it up to you. I don't, you need you all to call me anything, or however you want to get my attention, to make sure that you have the floor for that moment of time, is definitely key for us. Any other questions on five? All right, six. So, one thing for six, and from a read B, it just says, a citizen who is recognized by the council president to address the council is requested to state his or her name, whether he or she is a resident within the corporate limits of Salisbury, and or, and any organization, affiliation he or she is representing. So we want to keep that for the record, to make sure that the person is stating his or her name, or their name, and, okay, go ahead.
Where would we put something that's come up before? If the public is addressing the items on the agenda, then their comments should be allowed before the council votes on anything?
That would be the work session?
Okay. I wasn't sure where it would go, so, okay.
So, yeah, they would, so again, that's why we, so, and then we have added public comment to any item in the, in the work session, so that now public comment can be heard on anything.
Maybe at section eight, I guess, when you get into work session meetings, is that where you want to add it?
I think so.
So perhaps, yeah, I bet.
I wasn't sure where.
You could put it in both, I mean, doesn't matter.
Oh, and one note, going back to five, I do apologize, is making sure that our comments are pertaining to that topic at hand. I know it can get confusing, but making sure that whatever we're, we're discussing relates to that, that topic at hand. So, again, it's located in E about council members recognized for a specific purpose, shall limit remarks to that purpose. So keeping everything on the same wavelength is definitely key. Yes.
Under six, D, any persons making personal, blah, 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 comments in person. It talks about in the meetings, but I would like to address, again, emails. Either it be persons from the community emailing and not being respectful.
So...
Because we get a lot of emails.
Yes.
And there's got to be a way to address people's tone and what they say in emails. I don't know how we would address it per se, but I think this, this does a great job about in person. But I think, you know, people...
As much as I hate that when people get personal in emails or say horrible things, unfortunately, under the First Amendment, because we're elected, they're allowed to say anything they want to us to a certain extent. So unless it's hate crime level stuff, I don't think there's anything that's going to allow us to stop people from emailing us if they disagree with us on something, or they just plain don't like us.
Well, if they can't say...
Unfortunately, that's, that's the nature of the job.
I'm wondering...
So, I mean, you know, that's, I think that's, I think, I think that's something that we're going to have to, we're just going to have to suck it up. We're going to have to have a thick skin about it. That's part of the job. And there's, you know, that is a very slippery slope, and I just, I can't, I can't joke for that.
Well, if they can't cuss us in, or they shouldn't cuss us in public, they shouldn't cuss us in an email.
Well, they shouldn't, but that doesn't mean they're not allowed.
Yeah.
They can, they can do both, because we're elected, and they can say, they can say whatever they like to us for the most part. And I don't like it. I don't like hateful things being said to me. I've had some really horrible things said to me and about me. But I'm going to say this, I still support the person's right to be able to say whatever they want, because that's our freedom of speech. And we are elected, and that's, that's, you know, I think that's been pretty well determined by many courts in the past.
Well, on D...
I'll defer to, I'll defer to legal counsel on that, but...
Yeah. Well, then on D then, for freedom of speech, then how do we, then what's the measurement for that? For, for, for you to dismiss somebody based on what they say? What's the measurement for that versus the measurement for an email? Do you see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
How can you say it in, in public and, and then be asked to leave because of, because of your comment, but you, you say it in email, and you're allowed to say it in email? It's like you can't have it both ways. You can't be able to, if you say it in public, you could be asked to leave according to this here. I'm just saying by according to this.
Yeah.
And then if you say the same thing in email...
No, and I understand, I think that's...
Then if you say it in email, excuse me, then if you say it in email, then it becomes an issue. So, I mean, it becomes freedom of speech. So I don't know, maybe we do need to consult legal about that, but I just think it's, it's difficult to have it both ways.
I feel like this. If it's done by email, and if it's that crucial, then you need to report it. But I don't, I'm kind of leery about, you know, responding to everything somebody says in an email. I'm very reluctant to that. Now, when they're here, they're in a government building, sound, then I see where they come and they say, okay, you have to be removed from the building, because you're being disrespectful.
Indisruptive. It's...
Indisruptive. It's, it's a disruptive thing. That's what I was trying to get at. You know, in person, it's disruptive, and in email, that doesn't disrupt anybody. I open the email, I see the, see the response. It doesn't disrupt anybody else. It doesn't disrupt the, the rights of other citizens to, to gather and listen to the, to the council meeting. It doesn't interrupt anybody else.
As long as I'm not being threatened.
Hang on a second, one second. Because we, I think this is an exact instance of, I mean, everyone's excited, but if we have a lot of, give me one second, Councilwoman Jackson, we have a lot of voices, we need to let someone finish their thought and then chime in, because this is an instant where, again, I'm trying to be respectful, but it's, we have a lot of voices coming at each angle, and this is an idea, and I think it would be prudent for us to hear from legal, if you have any thoughts about, you know, the verbiage. And then we can discuss, because again, we're just going around, but hearing from legal as to, does this language make sense, and will this actually...
I think this is something that we should have that deep dive in the special meeting, but I think the issue would be probably, most likely, before we would ask anyone to leave, we would give them a warning in advance. And it would have to, you know, rise to the level that we think if we're not infringing on someone's First Amendment rights.
So perhaps we can...
So I think we can maybe tighten up that language a little bit, and I'm just not quite sure how to police an email once it's been sent. So is the issue there to respond and say?
I think the, the issue maybe, if someone says, you know, makes remarks on, you know, email, again, I know we can't block that. Is there any implication that we could give to the public? I think that's for further discussion, but are there any implications that we can give to someone if they send us an email that, that would be slanderous? That would be, you know, personal remark?
Can I say something? As long as that person's not threatening you, that's when I find it a problem, when they're sending you a threatening email. But a person can say what they want, I don't care less, because I don't have to entertain it. But when you're here in a government setting and having a meeting, then that's when, just like you said, ask them, you know, could you please calm down? If not, we're going to have to have you removed. But as far as the email is concerned, like I said, if it's not threatening, I don't see where it holds any, any authority, any, no. I just feel like it should be here. And if we, if you get threats, or if they keep, continue to do it, report it. Report it to the police.
Okay. So I think we'll, again, we'll dive deeper into that in our, in our thorough discussion, since that's definitely a, something that holds a little bit of weight there. Any other comments under six?
Under six, under F, three minutes.
We've been doing four.
I don't, I, again, I don't know how you police this, but I really feel that when there's a timer on, somebody that's bringing something to us of value, it's not about looking at the light green, yellow, red, but it's a matter of discretionary time, maybe. I don't know if that falls under your position, Deshaun, where you would say, okay, now you've, you know, you've talked long enough, let's wrap this up. Or another example is when, I wasn't on the council at the time, but there was a discussion of homes for recovery, and there were like 10 people that gave testimonies. And I just thought that, you know, that, that makes, it just drags on. And people don't come here to drag things on, but at the same time, I think what people want to share with us should have value and not a time limit.
Sure. I think that's a, that's a good question to pose, and I think that's, given the time limit, kind of meets in the middle, where again, you know, no one wants to, I think, belabor any points, you know, by, by, you know, spending hours. I've heard from different councils, where they have council meetings that start at four, and they don't get out to midnight.
Right.
And that's just, you know, with, with no resolution at the end, but, because three minutes, that seemed like a long time, but if you have a passionate issue, there's no amount of time that we could give you that would be enough. So, you know, and we have at, at a time under the work session, I think we need to button that up to determine, you know, again, if you've had your question answered, and those things we can discuss in, in further detail, but if council wants to amend that or adjust that.
Well, I, I think what Sharon is talking about, I remember the incident vague very well. First of all, they shouldn't have even spoke when I gave them the authority to speak that day, because they came here. So I said it, and that's when the work sessions changed, where people could speak, because why would you not allow people to speak at a work session?
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
And, and then wait till the council meeting, and everything is all as stone. So that's why I started that, that, that work session where people could speak.
I think, I think they should speak, but I worry about the three minutes, that's all. I just...
Council President, yeah, the actual language does say a time limit of three minutes per comment may be imposed, may being it is discretionary. So you have, I think, that flexibility to increase it, or... increase it, or to not impose it. If there's a lot of people speaking on the same topic, maybe you want to implement that. If it's one person who has a lot to say, I think you do have that freedom. Or you can expand to four minutes. But there is, it is, I think, legal, I think there's some discretion there.
The law is drafted, there is discretion, but I would just caution to be careful that we're not allowing, you know, one way and not the other. So that grade comes, yeah.
I thought we'd increased it to four minutes. Is that-
So for a regular meeting, it's one time, and then for a work session, it's another time. Correct?
Four minutes for, for meetings, and three minutes for work.
Yes, that's right. So we're still, we're still in a regular meeting right now. So it's, I think, and again, buttoning that up to make sure that we're doing the correct time. But, so it sounds like time is the essence. Time is, is definitely something we should spend some, some time on. Any other comments in section six? Section seven, voting and making of motions.
Just sorry, real quick on that.
Yes.
It does say questions posed by a citizen during the public comments portion will be logged and tracked by the city clerk. The city clerk will forward the questions to the city administrator for a response. So it does not ask or address us responding in real time. They ask a question.
Okay.
We acknowledge it.
Yeah.
We record it, and then we get back to them. It does give that opportunity for us to, administrator of council may refer to the mayor's office for a response if you ask for one.
Sure.
Where we can just log it. So again, back to the updates. If you want stuff in real time or want to wait, we have that ability.
And that's a good note. So again, so I have the clerk's office working on, kind of, for the heavy items, make sure that the public is aware of what, what the purview is. So something like that may be on, like a one pager that would be attached to every agenda. So again, the public knows kind of their rights and sort of the flow of things. And so that may be an item there where, again, we can't answer a question, but maybe, you know, more time may be needed to give you a better answer. So again, I know everyone wants a direct answer, but sometimes tomorrow may be the better time for that. And again, it's not because we're, we're being, you know, you know, disrespectful, but we want to make sure we give you that correct answer. So I'll make sure that we add that to, to the one pager. Thank you. Voting and making of motions, I think that's pretty, pretty explanatory there about the motions and how we make them. Work sessions.
One quick, one quick, if you don't mind, DeShawn. Under the closed session meetings, let's see, am I ahead of myself? I have different numbers. Sorry. Never mind.
We're a little bit ahead. Are there any comments under work session meetings? I know we wanted to add, add the one note about, about the remarks to the work sessions. So we'll add that.
Pages are different.
Okay. Closed session, what's your comment?
I'm just wondering, because, in other words, is it possible to put in here somewhere about, the council may conduct closed session meetings by state law. There was a big discussion about the minutes from the closed session meeting before I came on. And I'm wondering if there should be a timeline that the public is aware of, when the minutes will be released for their perusal? When it's legal, if, Ashley, for instance, if the incident was a closed session on June, June of last year, and then I think it was deemed that those minutes could be released, but they weren't-
I'm not sure that that was the finding, that it was deemed that the minutes could be released. Yeah.
Okay. I just wondered if we need to put something on there for explanation, that if it is deemed they can be released, is there a timeline, two weeks later, something like that, that they would be released? Is that necessary or not at all?
No. No.
Who's that?
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Who's that? Okay.
Okay, good.
What was that?
President, and I want to confer with Ashley on this. Now, closed session minute meetings are, is advisement for, under legal, never to be released, or not to be released to the public in general, period. Is that correct? Am I stating this correct? Hold on, please. It's, I got the microphone. Let me ask my question. Is that correct, Ashley?
Council has the right to waive its privilege or not. So if the minutes contain attorney-client privilege, then we could, at a minimum, we would want to redact the privileged communications in there, or depending upon what the document looks like. I don't know whether it would be possible to reduce, redact it version, or just deny the request. But generally, for closed session minutes, we don't release those.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, you said when council gets to choose that that is a vote, or a decision, who's that the discretion of?
It is a vote. There would have to be a vote to release those minutes.
I think, I think what you're saying is, we don't release them in the general sense of a closed session, because that was why we had a closed session. But I think in this case, the court or the board found in favor that the council acted inappropriately, and then gave them the option. That's, that's gave them the option of both, to release them or not.
Gave them the option.
That's right. So they have the authority to do so, if they choose to.
That is correct.
And they chose not to in this particular-
Just like anybody. I mean, it's council prerogative to close the meeting.
That's all I was saying, yeah. So you're saying, what, Sharon?
No, I was just curious. I needed that clarified. In other words, if, like Ashley has just said, if they're legally, if it's a legal decision, then they would be released. But if it is a board decision, and it is up to the council to determine whether or not they release it, that still is the prerogative of the council, correct?
Where we're, where we're talking about specifically a closed session, in which we went in to consult with legal counsel. In those instances, that would be protected by attorney-client privilege. And in order to release those, that is a privilege that this body holds. So not one person on this board could waive that privilege. It would have to come before you for a decision, and then there would have to be a vote. And if there was a vote to release, then, you know, then that's your action, and then it would proceed accordingly. But it's the, the board, or the entity itself that holds that privilege.
Okay. Seen other comments in nine, 10, procedures for security at city council meetings. This is detailing about having a Salisbury Police Department officer at our meetings, and what should happen if a person does become disruptive. I know we have, it highlighted here about posting the signage about a person that are bringing in any items that we find necessary to, you know, to search, or, you know, it's option E, or E there. So I don't know if we want to make any revisions to that. We can discuss it later, but it does-
We left the sign over at the old G O B.
Yeah, it's over there, though, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's still there.
Yeah. Okay. So we might need to bring that over.
Okay.
And 11, about use of council travel and training budget.
It was just a typo, that was it.
I saw, yes, I saw you said that.
I have one thing to go back to when you finish on that section.
Please.
Thinking about the disruption, I do know there was an incident that happened that then got some additional commentary to us. It wasn't necessarily one of slander or outbursts, but it was children, people who are young, who kind of become disruptive on accident. And then how that is handled by us, you know, delicately, but, but maybe it's still disruptive. So we don't address that in here specifically, because it doesn't hit any of those terms in here when someone's making an outburst. But it can be kind of disruptive in nature, and how we want to handle that. That's maybe something we should consider, think about.
Sure. And I think, just again, just again, conversations, again, and I mentioned it because, but it's really distrac, it's really distracting when, when there's side conversations and whispering, and it just, and I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, and not selfishly, but, yes, selfishly, but I can, I hear everything that goes on in this, even conversations over there and over here. So just making sure that we're all being respectful. And going back to 11, use of council travel, again, fixing that typo. I did have a, I did have a question about B and C. Prior to incurring the travel expenses, a council member shall, shall obtain approval of the travel from the council. And again, we're doing that now. Do we want to adjust that to, do we, how do we feel about that? That's option B under 11.
Is that set by, is that set by the city, so that we would follow suit and be in, you know, in alignment with what the city requires?
I don't think so.
So we have, so option A just says about being in compliance with the handbook, again, on the policy for travel. That's, that's the high level. So yes, we have to, all travel reimbursements and those things have to be, are under the city employee handbook. But what this is saying is, again, before you are incurring any travel expenses, right now it's saying that you should obtain approval from council. It doesn't say what, what, what vote. It doesn't say who. It doesn't say, I'm just, I'm just noting it here, that, again, we haven't been following this. It's here. So maybe we should adjust it, because it's saying it here.
If, I, I don't think that we should have to, if we're traveling for the council, for the city, I don't feel as though we should, and it's known to our city clerk, I don't think that we should have to get approval from the council.
I'm not saying, I'm saying, I'm saying a break here. So technically, we should have been. So we should adjust it if, if we don't think, I don't think that, again, to, because there's no indication of what, what, with the majority vote, there's no indication there. So what, what language do we want to use? Or maybe we should discuss this in further. But I think we should address that, as to who determines what.
President, Kelly? Okay. So in, once again, going back to my original thing about how this is very fragmented. If you look in our orientation book, booklet, which we all did receive, it does have an outline of the travel policy. So it seems that this probably is more in line of what we're talking about than maybe what is in the thing that we're talking about this evening, that we need to agree upon-
Sure.
-until we correct it. So that, this would be an example of how we need to-
So does that say who, so if I from council, does that say right now, who I need to get approval from to incur travel expenses?
You just need to, it says here, please let the clerk's office know. And then also it, it talks about using the handbook, the city handbook, for the other protocols. It goes into travel advance, talks about meals, travel policy, lodging, travel expense, such as such. But it does talk about, like, the city clerk office know, and basically says follow the city handbook for travel. We may want to update the actual amounts of reimbursement, because they're quite old in here, just saying.
Okay. So it sounds like we-
There's a lot to be updated.
Sure. Okay. So we'll, we'll hold that. And I guess, and that, the same for option C, because it's saying that no member should use more than one-fifth of the, the travel budget, but-
Some member, some council members have not used much.
Yeah.
Some choose to go, some choose not to go. Some are done going to M M L sometimes, or, you know, it just depends. It's totally up to you if you want to-
Sure.
-divide it by five, or-
So perhaps we should, again, for our, for our in-depth, so again, we'll, I want that scheduled very soon, because again, it sounds like, I mean, we, we have a living document that details a lot about what we're supposed to be doing and not. And it's, it's very open to a lot of interpretation. And that, with a body of five of us-
Are you going to include that?
With the resolution.
The, the resolution number 2396, it was also attached to the very document that we're scanning this evening, to- Resol, it, it goes on the actual conduct of the council.
Fifteen thirteen, yeah, so that's next.
Oh, fifteen thirteen, so that's-
The conduct.
And so is this one. It's part of what I'm talking about.
So it sounds like we, we need to spend a whole, a lot of time, because there's four or five documents detailing what we're supposed to be doing. And this makes it very confusing if we're not on the same page. So, but I would really, so once we get that date locked in, we all need to take a look at all, all the documents and have a lot of discussion, because it's, between five of us, we need to make sure that we're on the same page. And then going with that, the code of conduct, I think everyone has a copy of this, just make sure that we're all abiding by these five rules, and we can change these when we have that detailed meeting about us honoring and complying with the laws of, the regulations of this, of this document, mutual respect, and this is also for the public as well, but between council members, trust and building relationships, and details of how we should be doing that with the community, fore character, about modeling integrity and performance of the council duties and responsibilities, the, the responsibility, the guide and support for how we're supposed to be doing things. So again, this is the document right here that holds us accountable as council members. And I want us to make sure that we're focusing on this, whether we're in person, whether we're not. All our correspondence should be guided by these here rules and regulations and the code of conduct. Any comments, questions, concerns?
No.
All right. We do have some public comments. Ms. Lynn Bratton?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Bratton. I live in Salisbury on South Boulevard. Timer, I just have a few comments. So when you start doing your in-depth meeting, you can maybe kind of make notes. That timer, if you could start the timer after people say who they are and where they live, so that we do get the full four minutes to talk on our topic, that would be pleasant, because sometimes it takes a few seconds to say all that first stuff. That's just housekeeping. One of the things that I think you should be doing, and I don't think you are, is, and it's a suggestion, everybody on the city council is assigned to a commission, or a board, or a committee. And I think it would be very, very helpful to the community if at the end of the meetings, you reported a couple sentences about what happened at that board, or commission, or meeting. Number one, that would ascertain that you attended, which is part of the responsibility, code of conduct, that you, you signed on to do. Number two, the minutes to those things don't come out on a regular, consistent, quickly assessable basis. Most of the time, they are not videoed, they are not hacked fourteen, so the community can't meet on them and, and do it on their own. So if you had like a three sentences, I attended the historic commission, we did this, and this, and this, and this was the vote, this is how it turned out, and the next meeting is such and such, I think that would be very, very beneficial to the public. And I don't know whether it fits in that handbook someplace, but I think it probably would. And then the last comment was the release of the open meetings minutes. That was in reference to a violation of closed meetings rules, and that was a recommendation on the closed meeting people who met on some high-level commission and voted. And I still think those minutes should be released. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Robert Taylor?
Yeah, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident, walking fast, talking faster, hopefully, so he can get home. I told my wife I'd be there by six. Just a couple of things. I went through the rules for the county council a couple of years ago, when I was the council's attorney. And some of the things tonight, we'll bring it back to that. One thing about, I'm going to call it, I'm having nasty comments. You've got to be careful, because if you're going to allow the public to comment on something, either by email or in person, like I am here tonight, you can't cut them off, except if they're very, very disruptive or nasty. In other words, you have to make criticism. As Harry Truman said, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. Anyway, there are, there are limits, but you have to be very careful. I won't get into it. Public comment, all specific items, I think it's a good idea, we could put on the work session. I would, I would do that in the regular meetings, legislative meetings, too. It can be limited on a particular point. In other words, somebody would have to address the particular resolution, or bill, or whatever it is. And also allow general public comment, open on anything that is germane to the legislative business of the city, not, you know, something about whether it should be Trump or Biden. Robert's rules. This was a real sticking point at times in the county council. They do not actually have any form of parliamentary rules. And I looked into it and came up with a set of suggested slimmed-down rules that the Georgia Association of Counties, you know, we have in Maryland Association, Mago, every state has one. has one, and in Georgia, they had a slimmed-down version, I think I may still have it on my computer, if I do, I'll be glad to send it to you. Because Roberts rules itself, you know, if you get the book, it's like 600 pages long, and you could spend your lifetime trying to figure it out. So anyway, a lot of, a lot of legislative bodies don't follow Roberts rules, I'll tell you, that's, you know, that's not unusual. On the closed session that was mentioned, under the Open Meetings Act, there are like a dozen or so different grounds on which a meeting can be closed. With one or two exceptions, and I forget what they are, after the minutes are done, the council can vote, it takes a majority vote, but any of the closed session minutes can be released, with the one or two exceptions. I think one of them has to do with personnel matters, I forget what the other. And I think there are two matters on which they have to be released. One, and I'm kind of scratching my head here, is if there's a closed session on acquiring property, once the property is acquired, I think that closed, those closed minutes have to be released. Now, see Ashley shaking her head, she must, to agree with me, that is, not to disagree. And the other thing I would just mention on the attendance, there is a Attorney General's opinion, Ashley may have, and it came out during COVID, because a lot of local legislative bodies have a rule, and sometimes it's in the charter, that there has to be a quorum present at the meeting site. In other words, there can be people who vote by Zoom or whatever, but there had to be a quorum present, assembled at the meeting site. And I forget exactly all the ins and outs of that, but I think it's a good idea to have that in your rules, not in your charter, but in your rules. Because if something happens, and it's very difficult, because of, for example, COVID, to assemble a quorum, then you can suspend the rules, you don't have to follow it. Whereas if it's in the charter, and there's no suspension provision, you're stuck with it. So that's just a suggestion I have, because I think it's a good idea to have the body assembled in one place, and have people attending, like we're doing tonight at your other meetings, rather than to try and do it all by Zoom. So that's all my suggestions for you. Thank you.
Thank you all. So seeing no other council comments or, or questions or concerns, we'll move on to administration and council comments. Looks like they're already commenting.
No, I've got, I'm gonna have to, we got a buzzer, man. The, the only comment I will say is something back to our rules and regulations, rules of order. There's one thing I had missed as I looked through it. It says special open or closed meetings may be held at any time and place the city council determines is appropriate. Defining city council, is that in a majority? Most of the times, it references the council president or that. Just who determines that when you say city council? And how does that determine? So could the three of you go have a meeting by yourself, and not include Angela? Like, that's just what I just wanted to make sure.
Three of them have to sign that form.
That's, that's a good notion.
Okay. And that's it.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm, I'm glad we're making progress, even though it's incremental on the transparency component, and, and I appreciate Councilman Doughty's, President Council, President Doughty's effort on the rules and regulations, and trying to make those sharper. I hope we don't have, you know, problems going forward, people being agitated. I think if we could become more informative and transparent, that, that will dissipate dramatically, so, yeah.
Good. All right. Councilwoman Gregory?
Well, I am still coming to meetings from home, so I appreciate having that Zoom option, as always. I will be Zooming for probably the rest of the month, looking like, based on the current situation. For those that don't know, we've had some serious family health issues going on in our house, and a couple of hospitalizations here and there, so we, we really, it, January has been a long month, so if you have reached out to me and you've not heard from me, either poke me again, or just be patient, and I will get back to you as soon as possible. I appreciate everybody's grace and patience during this time. Other than that, I just want to remind folks, COVID is real, y'all, I just, I just got over it for the second time I, I've ever had it, and it's, it wasn't as hard as the first time, but it's still no fun, so please make sure you're masking up. It is going around like gangbusters, please lighten the load at the hospital, they are packed, they are working hard, so please do your best to stay healthy, and, you know, wash your hands, wear a mask, all that jazz. All right? Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Councilwoman Jackson?
Well, I've been easy. Not a thing. But I will, I'm, I'm going to say this, I'm with Michelle, please, 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 protect yourselves and others, because COVID, the flu, and other viruses are circulating through our county, our city, and I just want everybody to be safe, because as, as Michelle has said, since Jan, first of January, I have been under the weather. I am just really starting to feel better, so just protect yourselves.
Councilwoman DeShiel? Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson.
I feel that this is moving, tonight's meeting is a, an indicator that we're moving forward in a positive manner, and President Doughty said that, Doughty said we were going to, you know, we entertain the idea of a retreat with the council members, that would be another avenue to explore, and I think once that happens, and/or at some point in time, I would find it beneficial, because of promises, not promises, but suggestions I made when I was running, that we have some kind of a forum, or a town meeting, or something like that, that would allow anybody in the public that would like to share questions or comments with us, that they would have that opportunity, so that we'd have an open dialogue back and forth, so it's not a case of no one cares what we think, no one cares that we're here, and I think that would be the first step in making people realize that everybody matters, not just us.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. Councilwoman Blake?
Just as always, it's very important that if you are healthy enough, please donate blood. The Eastern Shore is a very, I'd like to pull some blood out of that right now.
Make sure we're being respectful.
Yeah, oh, yes, blood, we're all donating blood, blood. You could donate plasma as well, you just never know when you or a family member will need that. And also consider being an organ, an organ, which actually...
I am.
Mayor Taylor is, thank you, thank you. And you did, you proved it to me on your license, and that is wonderful. Thank you.
If you hear of my demise, you need a part, let me know. I'll get you going.
You just never know, and just stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you all. I, I want to first acknowledge that this is February, and so happy Black History Month. I am definitely proud and black, yes, I'm still black, so I'm, and I'm definitely proud of it, so for these 29 days, we got extra day this year to celebrate, so definitely make sure you learn about the rich culture, especially on the Eastern Shore that we have, and the many influential persons who have paved way, and definitely made, made some good things happen for Eastern Shore and for our, our region. So I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Gregory, so thank you for being here, I know you're dealing with a lot at home, so thank you for being here, and we, you know, our thoughts are with you, and make sure you're taking care of yourself, and have some sort of self-care in this, and, and I'm speaking to myself and my fellow council members, and make sure we're taking care of ourself, our city relies on us, and they need us, and I'm, again, I'm proud and thankful to be with the, the four other of you, and the five of us, and our mayor, and this, again, I'm excited as well, like Councilwoman DeShiel said, about the progress that we're going to do, and, and again, like it or not, we are friends for the next four years, so I want it to be a great, I want us to clean slate, I want us to move forward in a positive way, but I also want us to have fun, I said that at the beginning of my campaign, I want us to have fun while we do this, so I don't want this to be a task, I want us to enjoy coming together, and I want us to really make some, make a difference in Salisbury. So just two things, I believe, tomorrow, I'm excited, Leadership Academy at Junior Achievement, to spend some time with some, some 10th, 11th graders, who, to, a couple of community members are going to be doing some things there, so excited for that. And also want to pay my respects to Mrs. Cindy Anno, she was a fifth grade teacher, a teacher at North Salisbury Elementary School for many years, and she was my magnet school teacher, she passed away unfortunately, so her funeral was this Friday, but she was definitely pivotal in the, in the elementary education here in, in the city, so definitely want to send my regards to her family, and definitely her husband, who was the former Y High band teacher for a number of years, so our thoughts or prayers are definitely with the Anno family. So with that, this has been a productive and good meeting, and this meeting is now adjourned.